Six thirty.
Yep.
So, um, you want to just put that with those, Jim?
Yep. These are, um, mobile.
Everyone ready? We are recording. We are recording. Okay, welcome everyone. Uh, it is May twentieth, six thirty P M. This is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Rich Nagel, Mayor, and I will be presiding at the meeting. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call, Councilmember Yashewski.
Here.
Councilmember Batchery.
Here.
Councilmember Cowell.
Here.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleside.
Here.
All members present. Also present this evening on my left is City Administrator Pat Melvin. On my right, City Attorney Ross Arnison. And we have a number of people in the audience. Would you please sign in? I think, is there a signup sheet there? All right, make sure you get your name on that. Uh, changes in the agenda. I have one, and that would be to scratch item A under the consent agenda. Those minutes were just handed out, so let's take some time and, uh, approve those at the next meeting. So that item B would become item A, and item C would become item B. And on the flip side, uh, G, we're adding under resolutions, ten G. That's resolution thirty-three dash twenty nineteen. Are there any other changes in the agenda? Hearing none, a motion is in order to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Yashewski, second by Councilmember Hattleside to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. We'll move on to the consent agenda, just two items on it this evening. Uh, item A, approval of the May sixth council workshop minutes, which you received earlier today, I believe. And item B, approval of the bills.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Cowell, second by Councilmember Batchery to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. All right, item five, addressing the council. Is there anyone present that wishes to address the council at this time? Okay, and we typically give a five minutes, so, okay. And if you want to state your name and your address, please, that would be helpful.
Lisa Passwell, 1015 East Adams Street here in Arlington.
Okay.
Um, I'm not going to talk about a lot of the stuff because I had sent out an email, I believe it was last week, regarding some questions that we had. Um, just a couple of other things I wanted to bring up about Northland Drying, um, through my own little investigation I've been doing. Although the noise issue, and it's been a problem, and it's still a problem. The R S U police report this last week. I think Bailey Hetch will explain a little more about numbers that were written, things like that, but, um, I have a real big concern of what's going to happen in the future with the smell. There've also been a lot of smell complaints. There are, in Wisconsin Rapids, Wisconsin, burly Idaho and Stanfield, Oregon, it's called Three D Pro, Three D Idapro Solutions, which is a plant that does exactly what Northland Drying does to the T. Dries the potatoes, for the dog food, everything exactly the same. There is a class action suit in the works right now in Wisconsin Rapids because of all the smell complaints, and that's been going out for three years. The one in Oregon, about the same. Um, I don't know that there's a class action suit or any lawsuit in the works at this point. Um, at one point, they were giving them a citation every single day. There's been talk about them adding on to this plant, and I really have a question about what that's going to do to the smell. The smell again last night was horrible. So, moving forward, I don't want us to be sitting here three years from now going, okay, now what do we do about the smell?
Can you tell me the name of the Wisconsin company again?
It's called, um, Three D Idapro Solutions.
Okay, I D A spell I D A?
I D A P R O.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Um, and the reason that I even looked into that was when I looked back on one of the, the minutes from a meeting when Northland Drying was first going to buy the Seneca Building, they stated that this would be their first business here in Minnesota, but they had one in Wisconsin and Michigan. So then I just Googled, basically, dog food, potato drying, whatever, and that popped up. So then I went to that, and it's newspaper article after newspaper article and all that. And then I kept digging more, and that's when I found out about these other plants, so. I'm also wondering, with the vents in the roof that they're talking about, as far as more no- more noise than what there already is, which hopefully, something will be done about the noise issue. Um, wondering also if anything has been checked, inspected, any of that, as far as any permits, any of the new things that they're adding on. I do know for a fact two of their employees are not licensed electricians. I don't know what all they're doing out there, but if there's anybody in charge of going out there and seeing, do they have the right permits? Do they have the right storage bins? Do they have the right licenses? Has anything been inspected? That type of thing, to see if they're actually in compliance with what they should be. And, the last thing. The city has gotten real hard on all of the residents while cleaning up their yards, things like that, and that place looks like a junkyard. There's a lot of junk. And with that broken fence and the kids moving into the mobile home park, the fence where all of that big metal, they're, I don't even know what they are, storage bins, they look like big round tubes, I don't know. Just a ton of stuff that those kids can get in that fence besides it just looking like an ice work.
Are there people living in that trailer court now?
I believe that they have moved in now. I don't know that all of them have moved in, but there are some living there now. They're slowly filtering in.
I didn't think anybody was even living there. Being, not that it makes any difference, but I'm just curious. These, this plant in Wisconsin, is this owned by the same people that owns this one?
Okay, well, I've been doing my digging, and I can't exactly find out. That is my opinion, but I don't have any proof of that. That is also an L L C, which I can't seem to find the owners of that. Or, I, I can't find anywhere the actual owners of Northland Drying. At one point, on the Better Business Bureau, it showed that, um, Dave was, and that Seth was the plant manager. Now, the Better Business Bureau online shows that Josh is the main one, and Dave is the plant manager. I can't find anything of who owns what. What I found very coinci- what coincidental is this Seth Park is from Idaho, and Three D Idapro Solutions was originally started in Idaho.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I'm still digging, but I, I kind of have the same feeling because I read those articles of complaints and what the city's going through, and it mirrored exactly what we're going through here. Yep, we promised it'll be here. We have, we promised we're going to get this done, and they're sitting here three years later having to go through a class action suit, trying to get something done with the smell. I do have a call into their city person, who has not called me back yet, to see if they've, what they've figured out, if anything, to try and get some ideas for us, but I just don't, there's so many complaints already about the smell. I really want something done about the noise, don't get me wrong, but they're talking about adding on, and we're going to have a smell issue, and then what do we do about that? So, just kind of a look towards the future.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? And, uh, again, please use a microphone and state your address and names, please.
Uh, my name is Bailey Hix, I live at one twenty-four Henderson Road. Um, the last few days, um, Amy and I have been going out and sound testing using the same app that our police chief uses, um, to measure the decimal limit. And I have a phone very similar to his, as I've been told by James, our officer. And they've leveled over sixty every night that I've measured. So, definitely a problem.
Um, I'm Amy Berger, her mom, uh, one twenty-four Henderson Road. The reason we're bringing to your attention is because Chief Patterson is our, you know, he brought it to the council's attention at one point, that his phone measured pretty close to the ESI when they did the side-by-side, that forty-one minutes that they did. We pulled the I C Rs within, within just the last week of how many complaints? Two were ours and one was Chief Patterson himself, who thought it was rather loud, so he went out to do testing. Him and I have talked a little bit, and I think he'll bring that to your attention later, but, um, today, we went, we've gone up to it pretty much every night, and I've sent them, I sent the video to Pat, um, at one thirty in the morning the other night when it was bouncing above sixty. Today, I conveniently went out, I thought, well, I'm going to go get one right before the council meeting, because what we're noticing is, why is it louder during the night than during the day? If they can't change that, that at all, as a person who lives on that street, I think it should be louder during the day because the kids are playing, there's cars coming, things like that. It's not. It's fifty-eight, fifty-nine during the day. And at night, when it's the only thing running, it's above sixty every night. So, I know they're not the, the ESI things, Bailey has the newer phone. We just wanted to bring it up, uh, you know, and Officer Patterson also did different spots in town. But we went, we're just strictly going with the one oh nine where we spent forty or four-five hundred dollars to test it with that special equipment. It's the only place we've really focused on is that area right there, because I don't know how millers are sleeping. They're even closer than I am.
Apparently, we've gone out there, their lights have all been on, all night long.
And I also wanted to bring up a note on the agenda, I think it's on the agenda tonight. Um, the truck traffic that we just kind of slapped his hand about the other day? We spent Tuesday counting trucks. Thirteen that we just seen that went in and out of their plant down my road, down Henderson Road, after we just said, and he said, and talked to his drivers. We happened to follow one, because we knew it was going too fast. We didn't, we didn't get it on video in order to catch it not going through the stop sign, but I had to let, let the police department know that six out of the thirteen did not stop at the stop sign. And, um, we followed one because in their, in their conditional use permit that you guys all approved, said they wouldn't be winding through town. We followed a truck, guy lives in town, parks it by his house, just happens to be right next to Officer Sarah, where she used to live, and right around the corner from our sheriff.
I know where that is.
Yeah, yeah, right by you too. And, um, I used to have a friend who had a, had a trucking company, and all three of his boys drove a truck, and they used to get repeatedly ticketed for leaving just, just their tractors in front of their homes. So I questioned where our city ordinance is and why that truck is not being ticketed like we used to ticket everybody else.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move along to the announcements.
Mr. Mayor, if I just might.
Yes.
Lisa, what, what is the name of the company in Wisconsin Rapids?
It's called Three D Idapro, I D A P R O Solutions. Part of it states that they're based out of, it was started in Idaho, but I think different parts now you go on, and it might say Missouri, it might, but they have those three plants for sure.
I've got friends in Wisconsin Rapids that can, can make a phone call.
Okay. City Administrator Melvin.
Going down to announcements, item A, the Arlington Library. Just wanted to, uh, give the council an update on that. Kathy, Kirby, Mike, a number of staff, including some wonderful volunteers. They've been working diligently to, uh, move the books and the cabinets out of there. Uh, the carpet tiles have been put down, it looks, uh, great, as well as painting has been done. So, they are in the process now of starting to move materials back into the library. And so, just wanted to let you know that everything is going as, as planned. So, uh, it's looking, looking great. I think Kathy's happy with the progress that's being made. The second thing is that we have a blood drive coming here to the Arlington Community Center on Tuesday, May twenty-first, tomorrow, uh, from twelve-thirty to six-thirty. To schedule an appointment, please contact Karen Pickelman at five oh seven nine six four two eight eight two. Third item is that the, uh, there will be a root beer float social at the EMS building on, uh, May twenty-second from four to seven P M. in celebration of EMS Week. Which, uh, you'll see further down on the agenda, we have a proclamation that will be, uh, approving to celebrate as well. Uh, an opportunity that has come up for the city of Arlington to kind of toot its own horn is a, uh, Arlington A's game against the Saint Clair Wood Ducks. Uh, Channel Nine Fox TV News will be here to, uh, broadcast from about five until seven thirty. Uh, the city has provided a number of different individuals' names. Uh, Fox Nine is looking to do some, uh, special interest stories, and so, we've reached out to a lot of Arlington residents who have a long history of being involved in the Arlington A's, and, uh, we're encouraging all residents to plan to attend that, that game again on June fifth. The Arlington A's versus the Saint Clair Wood Ducks.
Is game time seven thirty? Is that what's, you know? That's what it says in here, but. Let's see. It's all right, I can.
Yeah, it is.
Game time is seven thirty. Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep. The next item is the Arlington Farmers Market, again on Monday evenings, uh, from June seventeenth through September twenty-third. That will be held right here in the Arlington Community Center parking lot, uh, from four to six thirty. Vendors will have some wonderful, uh, food products for sale. We encourage residents, if they have the chance, to come stop by and check out all the wonderful, wonderful organic selections that are available. The next item, the city of Arlington is having a cleanup day on June twentieth from nine to four P M. This is done in partnership with the Tri-County Waste Tire Appliance and Electronics Collections. This will be at the Sibley County Fairgrounds, and the city will have, uh, several dumpsters there as well. So, uh, for some of those items, there is a cost, uh, and the cost ranges from appliances, ten dollars. Car tires are two dollars, with rims, four dollars. Truck dot tires are five dollars, with rims, ten dollars. Tractor tires are ten dollars, with rims, uh, twenty dollars. Uh, they also take electronic items, keyboards, mouse, cell phones, a dollar each. Printers, stereos, V C Rs, and computer towers, hard drives are five dollars each. TVs and computer monitors of any size are ten dollars as well, so. Uh, if time for spring cleaning, this is your place to drop off some of those items. Uh, the last item that we have under announcements today is the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference, which is in Duluth from June twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth. If any council members are interested, please reach out to Laura or myself to get that scheduled. Thank you.
Okay, any questions on the announcements? All right, we'll move into communications.
First item is the building report. Uh, we had a total of fourteen permits that were pulled in April. Uh, the largest is a residential remodel that is occurring at three oh nine West Adams. Uh, we have, uh, two commercial residing projects, and, uh, a number of smaller, uh, projects underway for a total of fifty-nine thousand five hundred dollars in improvements to existing buildings.
Okay, any questions there? I guess, um, I would like to see, uh, City Administrator direct our building inspector to just check on Northland Drying's activities, to see if there were any permits that they needed, and if they did secure those permits, so if you could work with him to check that out. Any questions on the building permits? Hearing none, we'll move on to the People's Service Report.
The next item is People's Services. Uh, just wanted to call to your attention a few significant things that happened in March, uh, this year. They had a water service line that, uh, needed to be repaired at three oh five Eighth Avenue Northwest. The homeowners were responsible for making those repairs, and they did so by utilizing, uh, Litsow Excavating. Uh, the water had to be turned off for about an hour there. Uh, also, the council, uh, approved them purchasing a line tracing equipment, which assists them to locate underground, uh, pipes. They've had training on that, and they've, the reports that I've received is that it's worked very well uh, for them, helped them to save time in terms of, uh, locating items, so they wanted to, uh, send their appreciation to the council for that. We also had Lee Ortloff attended the Rural Water Conference that was held in Saint Cloud. A big part of those conferences, as you well know, is networking and learning what other communities are doing, and seeing if perhaps those can be applied to what is being done in Arlington, so. As you look at the average daily water pumped, you can see for March, we were, uh, right on par with what, with the amount that was pumped in two thousand eighteen. Uh, if you look at the wastewater pumped, you can see in March of two thousand nineteen, we were significantly higher because of some of the heavy rainfall events, uh, compared with what we experienced in two thousand eighteen, so. Are there any questions on any of that material?
Okay, hearing none, we will, uh, move on to the reports. Uh, Arlington Police Department, Mr. Patterson. Good evening.
Good evening. I guess, just to, um, maybe start with Amy's, uh, question, maybe I can answer that. There's two parts of that I think that I can fill in. Um, I came back from vacation on the night of Wednesday, the fifteenth, and that evening, about two o'clock in the morning, I heard a lot of noise. I couldn't sleep, so I figured I'd get up and go check it out myself, and I did a couple meter testings as Amy had advised you. So, about two to three in the morning, um, I took our testing device and drove around, and some of the readings that I was getting was around the forty-eight, forty-nine, until I went right to the plant. And when I went to the plant, I actually spoke with a gentleman, um, I think his last name was Dot, and he was the only one working, I shouldn't say the only one, he was the one I talked to, the only one I saw. And we went right to the source, and at that point, that was reading, um, quite high right at the door, right outside the place. Sixty-eight to seventy, kind of fluctuated. So, I just wanted to share that with you. So what Amy was advising is, I did go out and check. I went down Henderson Road, I went down Baker, Chandler. I came back on the main street, uh, at Second, Third, and then on Baker, getting back. And the majority of those readings that I was getting was in the forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty range. And it seemed to fluctuate, um, more so, if traffic went by on Highway Five, I would get a higher reading. So, but I still heard this loud resonating noise, as Amy's describing. So I, I can't put a finger on it, but the decibel, decibel readers that were given, I don't know if they're not able to read resonation. So, not being an expert and not having these certified, I can't explain exactly what it was, but there was a humming that I could hear as well. So, I agree with Amy to the point where I came up to check it myself. Um, on the topic of the semi truck driver. So, two or three days ago, I went out and found the semi tractor that Amy's talking about parked on Third, and, um, actually spoke with the driver. And then I went back and I looked up the ordinances to check and see if there's any restrictions. And per our code, there is the allowed one commercial vehicle, um, to be parked on a street in front of somebody's house. So I printed off the ordinance, I didn't bring it with me tonight, and I actually gave it to that truck driver. He also explained to me that, um, he does park his trailer in Northland Drive parking lot. So however he gets it there, uh, he will not use the routes of Henderson Road, or through residential areas with his trailer, but he gets the trailer to Northland, he parks it, and then he drives his truck and parks in front of his house. He's usually gone three weeks at a time, the night that I believe Amy actually saw the vehicle. I tried to inquire whether he thought he went through the stop sign or not, or if he thought he was going a little fast, and I think we obviously know what those answers would be. So, I didn't see it or witness it at that time, but there is a truck, he parks on Third Avenue, and I think per the code, it does allow for one commercial vehicle, meaning is, I think it's under thirty-two feet. Can't be parked there.
Is there a weight restriction, Chief?
There are weight restrictions.
I mean, as to the commercial vehicle that could be parked?
And I don't know what the weight of one of those trucks are, um, or nor would I know how to go ahead and weigh it. We'd have to call state patrol. I mean, I, I could ask him.
I think if they're licensed, over ten thousand G V W gross vehicle weight, then they're not allowed in residential areas. I think.
We have that in our ordinance?
I think so. I'm not going to bet any money on it, but I.
Well, if it's not in our ordinance, I mean, that would be one of those umbrella rules from the state, right?
It's an interesting reading.
Well, if I can interject, uh, I haven't looked at that recently, but my recollection is, uh, the discussions the council has had over the years, uh, we've discussed many times, uh, restricting, uh, commercial vehicles from residential zones, uh, parking of boats on trailers on the streets, uh, R Vs, et cetera. And the council, as in the past, always concluded, they didn't want to be too restrictive. Uh, because, uh, you know, they're balancing, uh, you know, people's personal freedoms with, you know, the benefits to the community. And so, uh, as I recall, where the council has in the past drawn the line is, uh, no semi trucks with trailers in a residential zone. But, uh, the tractor itself, okay. But again, just one. And the same thing with a, a boat on a trailer, or an RV, um, on, on the city street. Now, that's something that's always subject to council review, but, uh, that's my recollection of our discussions, and it's come up a dozen times, at least, since I've been city attorney, so.
Is there, is there anything in there regarding, uh, the semis running? For some reason, I'm thinking that.
Well, that would, yeah, that would come under the, uh, the nuisance ordinance, yeah.
And just to point out too, if you are looking it up, it's not under the normal nuisance ordinance or code, um, and it's not under the normal parking code. You have to look further back into the zoning areas. And then there's a narrative of weight, like you said, Jim, along with.
I think we had an incident in my neighborhood, and I thought I looked it up, and there was something about commercial vehicles over ten thousand G V W gross vehicle weight were not allowed overnight parking in residential.
Sure.
That's loosely translated.
And I, I wasn't prepared, I apologize. I didn't know that Amy was going to, um, have a question regarding that, or would have printed off that. It is available online, you can research it under the code.
code, and we could do that. And then into our announcements, unless there's any other questions. So, you were given our recorded ICRs for the month of April. The two thousand nineteen calls for service are three hundred and fourteen, and just in comparison to two thousand eighteen calls for April were two hundred and nineteen. So, we're up a hundred calls almost from last year. We have eleven hundred and fifty-nine as of April of two thousand nineteen for our standing calls, and I think they're pretty detailed. Vicki's been doing a good job of itemizing each of the calls if you wanted to go over any of them. I certainly couldn't. We have been participating in a TZD, it's called, Towards Zero Death. It's a initiative that's kind of stressed through the state of Minnesota for officers to be encouraged to do speed enforcement, seatbelt enforcement, DWI enforcement. And we have been participating as of last year with Glennco PD, and they have asked us to actually join their group. And the benefits that come from doing that is the officers that will be working those TZD hours for those designated events. One of the newest ones that's being added into it is distracted driving, people holding their cell phones while they're driving around, not paying attention where they're going. So, special enforcement days, hours could be designated at a rate of a time and a half to the officer that's working it. So, the advantages of that would be obviously financially for the officer to put in a couple extra hours above and beyond their eighty-hour, two-week pay period. And the city gets completely reimbursed for that at our overtime rate. So, I guess I would ask consideration for the council to allow me to go ahead and say that it's kind of a no-brainer that we participate in that and allow the officers, you know, X number of hours per two-week pay period, or whatever stipulations we want to put on that to participate in the program. It benefits the community in the sense for safety and awareness. Sometimes it's not always a favor because they get stopped for not wearing their seatbelts, but it doesn't necessarily force us to issue citations every time. We can do it as a community awareness and an education thing as well. So, we need to give them some notice by November to make sure that we are collaborating with them, and then we would be able to get those funds and get reimbursed for any overtime hours. It brings up a topic of our employment hours. We have an eighty-four or an eighty-six hour overtime cap, meaning any officer that works up to eighty-six doesn't get overtime. So, I guess I would like to consider if I can do a proposal to Pat, adjusting or allowing for strict TZD hours. Anything over eighty could be billed at time and a half so that we don't have to cap the eighty-six for our purposes. And we can kind of clarify that a little bit more if that's, it seems a little confusing as I'm even talking about it. So, the gist of it is our officers have to work eighty-six hours in order to earn overtime rate, but if we could put a stipulation in our contract that says any TZD hours above your eighty-hour normal work week would then become paid at time and a half. And that wording has to be in there in order for the state to allow us to participate, because otherwise, there's been other agencies that have gotten jammed up where they have not paid the overtime, but they've billed it. So, we just need to be online with the protocol that they've got set forward.
So then, any overtime towards that TZD over and above the eighty hours would be reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So, we would initially have to pay it out, but then we would submit it, and I don't know if they do that quarterly or if they do it monthly, but I can certainly get those details.
Is there a cap on those funds, or is that like an unlimited fund or what?
There is a cap, and it would be a combined hourly cap with Glennco, and we'd make sure we don't exceed whatever the state is allowing. Through the years, it has dropped for Glennco as well. One benefit was that Sibley County is rated one of the highest speeding counties, I guess, in the state for per capita tickets that get written by State Patrol and others. So, because of Glennco partnering with us, it will increase their number of hours and the amount of money that they can get for extra enforcement as well. So, we are still looking at working on the truancy ordinance, and I'd like to, I think we kind of have it written out. Ross and I have looked at it before. We'd like to tweak it just a little bit and maybe identify some, some things that we can implement, the fine schedule and some other things, but I'd like to get that in order so that at the beginning of school year next year, we have that in place and that we can utilize that to its fullest potential. This year, we got some reports from the school that they were having some, any amount of truancy is too much, but more than they're, more than what they want, and they think, think that this will be a good tool to help out with that. So, that's one of the things that we're gonna push forward on as well. In addition to the complaints with Northland, I've gotten a couple other complaints or requests about the intersections on Second and Third Avenue near Clinton, that there is no road sign restrictions. There's no yield sign one way or another and no stop sign. We did have an accident on Second Avenue and Clinton last year, or maybe it was this year during the wintertime, and a lot of it was based on the height of the snowbanks, but there was no control at either of those directions. So, nobody really had an idea of who had right of way until it was too late. So, there's been a couple neighbors, three of them specifically, that have asked if we could do something about those. So, I just throw that out there as well.
I believe there's one, I don't know, there may be more, but I know there's one uncontrolled intersection on Adams.
And there are a few-
A few blocks off of Highway Five, west of Highway Five.
Yeah, and there are a few in town. Doesn't mean it's gonna stop an accident, but it could help. And I don't know if we want to put signs at every single intersection, but those were two that it was brought to my attention. Upcoming things, I've got a evidence management training. I know last year I audited our evidence room, and I'm trying to figure out how I can do it a little bit more efficiently so that we're in compliance with the state as well. They're having a training the twenty-ninth and thirtieth of next week, and I'm gonna be going and attending that, hopefully trying to utilize the computer software that we have a little bit more efficiently. I think that's, I did have a discussion with Jim about our scheduling with our new officer that we have, and I guess I'd just like to make a point of, there's times where you may see two officers working anytime during the week or in the evening. If we were to go back and we were to recall a discussion that I was having, when I started here, we had twelve-hour shifts, and we dropped it down to ten-hour shifts, and we gained an extra day per pay period. So, hoping that makes sense, per officer. So, right now, we have three extra shifts per pay period that we have to fill. The night shifts are filled, and then I'm working day shift. I have Sarah working a day shift rotating also. And with those extra days that we have to fill, I allow the officers to pick a day, or I pick a day, to fill in vacation times and to allow for the other officers to get off for training, or like I've got upcoming training, I can flex Sarah or one of the other officers into my time being gone in a way. So, I just wanted to let you know that there are times where you will see two officers maybe working with two squad cars. It isn't the norm, but there will be occasions that that does happen. The benefits that come from that is we can get caught up on our investigations, our reports, and we can also combine training time as well. So, I just wanted the council aware that, you know, if you are hearing anybody complaining about why do we have two squad cars moving around at the same time, we are managing our shifts and maximizing the coverage. I'm also looking at seeing if there's maybe a way that we can better flex those days. The trouble I run into is I don't want to force the officers to work every single weekend. The way we have it, I want to be able to have them so they can have off every other weekend. And when you have that requirement, I guess, built into the schedule, it makes it tough to fill other times without some crossover. So, if there are any other questions, I'd be glad to sit down and write it out and kind of show you how and why it's working the way it is, but why it works so well. So.
I have a question. When's been the paper and everything, the school budget's been an issue? Just wondering if you've got any discussions with them about the school resource officer?
I've been speaking with the superintendent and the principal, and they assure me that they're working towards trying to, trying to work things out, but they also know that there's some difficulties with the budget, and they're not sure exactly where that's gonna sit with us or with the police department. You know, I go back to the whole, having a school resource officer, I think, would be a great thing, and I don't know what the school is gonna be able to put into it because I, it would be up to the school board to make that vote and make that decision. And I know Jim has mentioned that he'd like to present that, but I can't say what's gonna happen. I was surprised when I read the paper about that, too.
There has been some talk in the past about having police chiefs throughout the county meeting occasionally just with the sheriff's department.
We have been doing that.
You have been doing that, okay. And with the new sheriff and everything, I didn't know if that was one of the things that got started.
Yes. Sheriff Neenabber has been pretty good about getting that on the schedule, and during the summer, we might miss a month, but we're gonna pick it up again. Yeah, there's been discussion at each of those, most recently about the mutual aid that we've talked about and trying to get that finalized. So, we're kind of working on that as a topic right now.
Good. Anything else for Chief Pedersen?
I just thought I would like to talk to you about the Arlington Night Out. Didn't have to be, you know, soon, but make plans for how we're gonna do this year.
Yeah, we just called our first meeting just to kind of group everything together and figure out what we needed. We have a Thursday, Rip Your Float fundraiser slash kids getting out of school thing. So, this coming Thursday at the school during all lunch hours. So, we're gonna be promoting that and starting our first kickoff then. We'd like to do another one, maybe two Rip Your Float things like we did last year. I think they were a pretty good community presence, I guess, for us. So, yeah, Arlington Night Out. We have bought a speed radar for throwing a baseball. Kind of the Arlington A's theme is the baseball thing, so we're gonna set this radar thing out and let kids see who's got the fastest pitch. We might find some, some, I don't know, what do you call it, someone in the, in the rough that's ready to be a pro baseball player. I don't know. We took it to the school today, and we actually did some testing with a group of kids, and they had a really good time. So, that's one new addition we're gonna have with it. So.
Arlington Night Out set for August sixth, Tuesday, first Tuesday in August?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else for Chief Pedersen? Thank you very much. All right, and move on to item nine, ordinances. The second reading of ordinance three twenty-five.
Councilmember's ordinance number three twenty-five. I will just go through and quickly read. The City Council of the City of Arlington, Minnesota, to promote the public safety, health, and welfare hereby ordain as follows. An interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on the residence residency of predatory offenders within the city limits. The City Council finds the following. The city has the authority under Minnesota statute four sixty-two point three fifty-five subdivision four to impose a temporary moratorium on certain uses within the city pending study of an issue before enacting long-term official controls. Two, risk level three predatory sex offenders as defined under Minnesota statute two forty-four point oh five two are shown by statistical studies to have a high risk of reoffense. The location of such individuals within city limits therefore presents a significant threat to public safety, especially to children and vulnerable adults. Three, as a temporary regulation, the city declares it is unlawful for any risk level three predatory sex offender to establish a permanent or temporary residence within a two-thousand-foot radius of any school, licensed childcare facility, public playground, school bus stop, group home for vulnerable, vulnerable adults, or any other place where children or vulnerable adults are commonly known to congregate. Item four, this moratorium shall be in effect for no more than one year from date of adoption. It is intended that the City Council refer this matter for study by appropriate city committees to in turn make recommendations to the City Council to assist the council in adopting long-term official controls, regulating residency options within the city limits for risk level three predatory sex offenders. This ordinance shall become effective immediately upon publication. This is the second reading of ordinance number three twenty-five. As we get further down in the agenda, there will be a resolution for you to approve putting this interim ordinance into effect. Are there any questions? Anything from the audience?
Any comments or questions on ordinance three twenty-five? We'll deal with it in resolution form further down. Okay, we'll move on to resolutions then, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty nineteen. Ah, you can do that. That is Emergency Medical Services Week, recognizing it as May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth, recognizing it as EMS Week in Arlington, and recognizing their value, commitment, and accomplishments within the community. You all have a copy of this? Do we typically read these? I guess if you understand what's in the proclamation, in the resolution. Any questions regarding the recognition of the EMS Week?
I'll introduce resolution twenty-seven twenty nineteen, proclaiming May nineteenth through twenty-five twenty nineteen as Emergency Medical Services Week in Arlington, Minnesota, and recognizing their value, commitment, and accomplishments within the city.
I'll second it.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Yes.
I think you should read the proclamation so that the people at home and in the audience can fully appreciate how we appreciate the EMS service.
I can do that. Okay, this is resolution twenty-seven dash twenty nineteen, proclaiming May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth twenty nineteen as Emergency Medical Services EMS Week in Arlington, Minnesota, and recognizing their value, commitment, and accomplishments within the community. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas members of the emergency medical services agencies are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency medical services care dramatically improves the survival and recovery of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of dispatchers, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas the members of the emergency medical services system, whether volunteer or career, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the- And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value, commitment, and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating it Amer- Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the city, that the Arlington City Council does hereby proclaim the week of May nineteenth through the twenty-fifth twenty nineteen as National Emergency Medical Services Week, recognizing the professional commitments of those individuals and agencies which represent the EMS system in Arlington, Minnesota. This resolution has been introduced by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Haddelstead. Are there any questions, comments? If not, we'll vote by roll call. Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
And councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
All councilmembers in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Next is resolution twenty-eight dash twenty nineteen and this is a rep- uh, application for lawful gambling permit from the Sibley County Agricultural Association.
The raffle will be scheduled for September seventh, two thousand nineteen.
I make a motion to approve resolution twenty-eight twenty nineteen, a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agriculture Association.
Second.
Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty nineteen introduced by councilmember Highland, second by councilmember Batchery. And it is a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agricultural Association. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
All councilmembers in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen is a resolution for ga- lawful gambling permit for the Arlington Fire Relief Association to conduct gambling at the Arlington House.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen, a resolution approving the application for a lawful gambling permit for the Arlington Fire Relief Association.
Second it.
Mister Mayor, I just have a question. Is this for poll tabs or?
I think I saw poll tabs, yes.
I believe this slash would be electronic gambling.
Electronic?
Electronic gambling.
Is that right? Okay. I don't know where I saw poll tabs, but maybe it was.
That individuals will be able to go in and will be able to sit at a machine and basically, um, gamble at the machine. So hopefully, uh, this is something that they've been looking into and hopefully this is something that will help raise some, some funds for our Fire Relief Association, so.
Any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Uh, councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
And councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution twenty-nine dash twenty nineteen is adopted. Resolution thirty dash twenty nineteen forgiving the facade improvement loan to Grand K LLC.
I'll introduce resolution thirty twenty nineteen, uh, forgiving the facade improvement loan to Grand K LLC from the Arlington EDA Facade Improvement Program for a project done at, uh, two oh nine Main Street West.
Second.
For those in the audience, would someone wanna just briefly, that's familiar with this facade loan program? Just describe how that takes place or what happens when they get the loan?
Um, they, businesses can come in and request from the EDA, uh, 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 loan that's worth, uh, up to, I think, twenty-five hundred dollars is the max that we will match, uh, match the loan. Um, and after a year, uh, they get reimbursed, so.
As long as they're.
Or we could, we forgive them, excuse me.
As long as they're still in business.
As long as they're still in business, correct, yeah. We've had, I think, five of these loans so far, um.
It's money to help them upgrade the front of their building. So it keeps pretty much Main Street looking nice.
Okay, any other questions on this resolution? Resolution twenty, or thirty dash twenty nineteen has been introduced by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Haddelstead. It is a resolution forgiving the facade improvement loan to Grand K LLC from the Arlington EDA Facade Improvement Loan Program for a project at two oh nine Main Street West. We will vote by roll call. Uh, councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted.
They did a nice job with that building. It was really nice.
They do a nice job with all the buildings in Arlington that they're involved with. They take a lot of places that may not look the best and when they're done, it's a major improvement.
Yeah.
Yep. Resolution, uh, or I should say item E, resolution thirty-one dash twenty nine, twenty nineteen forgiving the loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program.
I'll introduce thirty-one twenty nineteen forgiving a loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program.
Second.
Adam.
Second.
Okay. And again, for the audience, this is a loan that, uh, is taken out by somebody who wants to start daycare but maybe is short on funds to get things taken care of such as, um, various, uh, items that they need for the home or safety items that they need, uh, safety gates, uh, fire extinguishers. License fees. And then at the end of the year, as part of the daycare business, that loan is forgiven.
I can't believe it's been a year already since Jenny started the, it's been like a week ago.
Alright, uh, resolution thirty-one dash twenty nineteen introduced by councilmember Highland, second by councilmember Cowell. And that is a resolution forgiving the loan to Jenny's Daycare from the Arlington EDA Child Care Loan Program. Is there any further discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
All in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty-two dash twenty nineteen approving a loan from the Arlington Restoration Renewal and Rehabilitation Loan Fund for, um, Bradley Meli- Melius and Mary Melius and directing preparation of loan documents relating thereto. Do you have any comments on that one? I don't, not familiar with.
Yeah, this was another one that was brought to the EDA and with the, um, rental rehabilitation. So, they asked for, it was a loan for the amount of money to replace the roof. They came in with wanting, uh, another project done, but they backed off from that and just went, just was requesting this one here.
Um, is this addressed, is, is that down by the fairgrounds? The duplex, the brick duplex right by the fairgrounds?
Yes.
Okay, that's the only thing I could think of on Chandler that would be have consecutive numbers like that, so. Okay, anyone wish to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce resolution thirty-two twenty nineteen, um, approving loan for the Arlington Restoration Renewal Rehabilitation Loan Fund for Bradley Melias, Mary Melias and directing preparation of loan documents relating thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Resolution thirty-two dash twenty nineteen introduced by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Highland. And you heard the title, um. Vote by roll call, councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
All members in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty-three dash twenty nine, twenty nineteen, resolution approving ordinance three twenty-five entitled an interim ordinance establishing a moratorium on the residency of predatory offenders within the city limits and authorizing summary publication thereof. And this relates back to the, um, the second reading of the ordinance which took place about fifteen minutes ago.
I'll make a motion to introduce and approve resolution thirty-three twenty nineteen approving ordinance three twenty-five entitled an interim ordinance establishing moratorium on the residency of predator offenders within the city limits and authorize a summary publication thereof.
Second.
Resolution thirty-three dash twenty nineteen was introduced by councilmember Batchery, second by councilmember Haddelstead. And this is a resolution relating to the, uh, interim ordinance, uh, moratorium on residency of predatory offenders within the city limits of Arlington. Is there any questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Councilmember Batchery.
Yes.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Yes.
Councilmember Cowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Yashewski.
Yes.
Councilmember Highland.
Yes.
All members voting in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Alright, getting to unfinished business, item number eleven, Northland Drying update.
Council, just to refresh your memory from the last, uh, uh, council meeting, we had significant discussion about the Northland drying and the noise that is coming from their operations. And there was some question as to whether or not the city could rely on the MPCA to assist with some of that, uh, measuring of noise. And I believe that, uh, city attorney Arnderson may have an update for you on that, perhaps.
Uh, yes, I did put in several calls to MPCA and actually a call was returned at the end of the afternoon today, so that was just in time. Um, a question arose, uh, as to, under what circumstances MPCA would get involved in, uh, noise monitoring and enforcement? And, uh, through some curious history that they weren't really able to explain to me, um, they, uh, as was previously, uh, understood by the council, uh, they don't get involved in noise enforcement, uh, except with industries that have an air quality permit. Um, so the next question is, uh, under what circumstances, uh, is a business required to have an air quality permit? And their answer is, if there's some evidence that they are putting particulates into the atmosphere. You know, uh, simple example would be, you know, some kind of black smog coming out of the stack and, you know, settling in a blanket around the community. Uh, you know, that would be a clear-cut situation where an air quality license would have to be required and then certain standards met. The, uh, uh, preliminary review, uh, they had with Northland Drying indicated that they weren't the type of industry that would normally require an air quality permit. But MPCA, um, said they didn't actually do any determination of that. Um, apparently there was some initial contact with MPCA, uh, presumed by Northland to query upon that and some discussion about what they were doing. And the conclusion was, it didn't sound like they needed an air quality permit. So, how does that question come up again? If there's any perception in the community that there may be particulates emanating from the factory, then, uh, you know, that would be a basis for, uh, having MPCA, uh, check into it to determine if an air quality permit is required. I also asked them, uh, you know, what about, you know, voluntarily, in quotes, uh, requiring an air quality permit, um, you know, even though one might not otherwise be needed, but just in order to get MPCA to get involved with noise, uh, uh, monitoring. And their answer was, well, they never heard of that idea before, but, uh, it didn't sound like it would fly uh, because, uh, they're not in the business of issuing licenses and, you know, charging fees and, and doing inspections unless, uh, uh, a, a regulation of the activity is actually required. So, uh, it wasn't an outright no, but it was kind of a no that, uh, you know, you, you can't, uh, require or ask an industry to voluntarily request an air quality, uh, license uh, unless there's some scientific basis that, yeah, they actually need that license. So. Um, uh, city administrator and I had a separate discussion about, uh, whether, uh, the city has any flexibility in imposing, uh, other noise standards other than what the state guidelines, uh, uh, establish. And I guess we're just in the early stages of investigating that. And I don't know, did you get any feedback from the league?
I, I did talk with, uh, uh, a research attorney at the league. He was going to take, uh, uh, further time to review the statute and then get back to me, uh, with regards to that 'cause, and, and this is just my preliminary reading is that, uh, the MPCA sets the limit for noise control. However, if you're monitoring a specific noise creation, you can, the way I read it, the city can be more restrictive, uh, if it's a specific noise that you're controlling. So, I'm waiting to hear back from the League of Cities and I'll be sure to share that with.
I guess that would, that would beg the question if, if, uh, the city would adopt more stringent levels of noise, uh, would that apply to, or would current industries, so to speak, be grandfathered in under the old? Or would they have to?
That would be a sologic, a follow-on question. Um, although I think if you're in the nuisance area, uh, grandfathering doesn't, uh, universally apply in the same way it does in other types of zoning changes. Um, uh, I guess to try and give a crude example, if, let's say there's a a zoning law changes that says, uh, well, you can only have a three-story building in town. But there are existing three-story buildings, uh, are they required to saw, you know, the, the top floor off or what? Well, it, that really doesn't usually, you know, uh, overlap into the nuisance concept. And so normally that kind of thing would be grandfathered in. But things like noise, air pollution, um, you know, garbage accumulation, things like that. Um, I, I, I'm not sure that grandfathering would, would, would apply as easily in situations like that. Um, as far as the city adopting more stringent standards, I did ask the MPCA official that I talked to at the end of the afternoon and they weren't really familiar with that area. Uh, they didn't say it didn't exist, they just said they weren't familiar with it. And I suppose it's because they just concentrate on their regulations, you know? But, uh, the League of Cities, as we know, is a very excellent resource, so I think we can rely on them for an answer to that question.
Wouldn't, um, the odor that emanated from the plant have something to do with air quality?
Well, I asked them about that and since smell is very objective, um, they said that, uh, at least their air quality licensing doesn't normally address smell, it addresses particulates. In, in other words, actual pollution, you know, that's physically emanating from the plant in some way. Um, and not, you know, how does the exhaust actually smell? So, um, so that was their immediate answer, right? Cause I did ask them that too. Thanks for asking that, I didn't cover that.
There could be particulates in, in the air causing that smell.
Yes, yes. Um, well, the sense of smell, as I recall it from high school biology, is you actually have particles of some object, you know, that are given off by that object. It goes into your nose and you detect it, okay? So, uh, uh, you know, an odor of an object isn't something intangible or, you know, just an aura or something, or, you know, it's, it's part of that object. So, you, a- anytime you smell something, uh, you're picking up particulates from that object, the origin object. But when the, when the state is talking about particulates. the origin object, but when the state is talking about particulates, they're not talking about the microscopic particles that you can sense with your nose, you know, they're talking about, oh, well, before this factory opened up, I didn't have any problem, but now, when I hang my laundry in the backyard, it's covered in soot. Oh, okay, you know, that's the kind of thing the MPCA is concerned about licenses for, so. But, I guess smell nuisance is something else that we can certainly research.
Ross, I talked to Bruce Brow last week, and he said there was a day or something when all of the cars were covered with a light, sandy, gritty, brown-type material.
Yes, and I heard that report. I guess it'd be interesting to know if, you know, there's any way of determining the origin of it. Also, I guess I would say that depending on, you know, wind direction and the height of smokestacks and so on, you know, where would any particulates logically be landing from the Northland Drying plant, you know, and, and whether we're seeing any residue, you know, anywhere else in town? Because that could certainly be, you know, very easily, you know, dust blowing in from the country. But, I guess if that problem recurs, well, one possibility is that they, you know, dust together a sample and have it analyzed, see if we have somebody tell us, you know, what...
What it is?
What it is, yeah.
Is it clay, or black dirt, or dog food?
Yeah, yeah. Now, that's a good test area, because of course, they have lots of shiny surfaces.
Yeah.
You know, it's had some of the unique...
Take a paint scraper and scrape the stuff off the car.
Metal, non-metal paint scraper. Water. Is that all you handle, your cars?
Always, yeah. Then you buff off the scratches.
Anything else on Northland Drying update?
Just to give you an update, we're still waiting in anticipation of the multiple-day testing results from Northland Drying, so I have not heard anything since our last meeting.
And they said, basically, it could take up to two weeks or around two weeks, so, okay.
Yeah, based on ESI's schedule.
Now, that, will that be, will they be furnishing, that being, Northland Drying paid for that service this time, are they going to be furnishing a copy to the city as well? I assume they will.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Okay, all right.
Has the city been discussing what we're going to do about all the complaints? Our citizens deserve that.
I think we're...
And let's not wait till we get the report, let's start moving, so that, you know, if this happens, that this is what we will do, because they've been very patient with us, and we owe them.
My hope is that I'll receive word back from the League of Minnesota Cities sometime this week, prior to receiving those results from Northland Drying, at which time we can hear the results, and then, whatever those results say, the council still has an opportunity to take some action if they wish.
Because the sad part is, you know, like with Chief John, I mean, two o'clock in the morning, there's noise, the other residents have had that noise, like I said, that one weekend, Saturday and Sunday, I walked outside, I don't have a meter, it was loud. And I really wonder, does he have variable-speed motors down there? How do we know? He could have cranked those down during the testing, you know, when he gets behind, bump 'em up a little, we don't know any of this. We know nothing.
Was...
But he's still going over the limit on the noise.
Was the testing company going to inspect in any way the equipment, the motors, to see if they were multi-speed, or...
That was a question that I did bring up to them, based on the discussions that we've heard from residents, and yes, Andrew was going to verify, but what does that mean? I mean, verify could be asking him, are you able to adjust your motors and the noise you make? We've asked that several times, and we've been told, no.
Yeah, he tells us a lot of things.
So, how do we verify that? I don't know the answer to that.
I think it's something's got to be verified, because, like I said, we have no idea what he's doing. I mean, we talked last week about, while Josh was here with Henderson Road, and what did he say? "I'll talk to all these truck guys and have them make sure that you go off Highway Five." What happened this week? They're still on Henderson Road. The guy tells us all these stories, and he doesn't, until we send the police down here, or Pat, you're sent down there, he doesn't do anything. He says he's going to take care of the citizens, this and that, but he doesn't follow through with that. That's why I questioned this, you know, can he regulate that speed? Because if he can, it's going to increase the noise. I don't believe anything he tells me, I just don't.
It's a valid concern.
Thank you, Tom.
I think residents have brought up, too, I mean, he's not there around the clock, there are other people who are there as well, so does he always have knowledge about what exactly is occurring at the facility?
We get whatever story he tells us. I'm totally convinced.
Well, I was going to bring you a reading tonight, to what it was during the day, and it was, been on all weekend, but it's off now.
And it was on two hours ago, it completely shut it off right before a meeting.
Okay, any other items on the update? You got that covered?
Yeah.
All right. Move along to item twelve, another new business, approve or deny a bid from William Mueller and Sons.
Councilmembers, Kirby presented me with the quote that's included in your council packet, this quote is from state contracts, so as you may recall, if we go ahead and purchase services on state contract, the state has already conducted an analysis and has identified the lowest bidder. William Mueller and Sons is able to go ahead and to address some of the frost boils that we have, as you can see on the quote, there's two different groupings, one is for three-inch bituminous, the other is for a four-inch bituminous. So, as you can see, the areas are Chestnut Drive, West Alden, Seven and a Half Avenue, Seven and a Half Avenue, Polar Circle, East Dayton, as well as Shamrock Drive, Chestnut Drive in Shamrock, and then East Elmwood. So, these are the areas that Kirby believes are in most need of repair, he is recommending to go ahead at a cost of seventeen...
Five sixty-two.
Seventeen five sixty-two, and he will find money within his street budget to cover that expense.
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for William Mueller and Sons for the repair on the frost boils around town.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Batchery, second by Councilmember Cowell, to approve the bid from William Mueller and Sons on state contract for patching eight different frost boil locations, and the amount of the bid is seventeen thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Item thirteen, approve or deny the city of Arlington being the fiscal agent for Choose Arlington.
The next item is a opportunity to obtain a grant from Smith. This grant will allow Amy Newsom, as well as other individuals who have been involved in the Choose Arlington Steering Committee, especially Kirk Mank, who's with us this evening, to go ahead and to start to address some of the issues that the Marketing Hometown America has addressed. Marketing Hometown America was a number of groups that got together and identified issues that needed to be addressed within the city, included economic development, and also making Arlington a more friendly, friendly site for businesses. Part of the activities that they would like to do is they'd like to work with more signage, but more so, what this grant will be focusing on is working to create a business incubation office, so working with several individuals who recently purchased a building, they will make that into a business incubator, they will outfit it with what is needed to hopefully attract businesses, and hopefully populate the offices that we have available on Main Street. So, the request here is not for any funding from the city, the only request is that you have the city of Arlington serve as the fiscal host for this grant. So, there will be no reports, or different things that need to be submitted, it will simply be accepting money and then providing it to the work group. So, if you have any questions, Kirk Mank is here, and I'm sure he would be happy to answer any...
I think part of this also is dealing with the BizLink North that we've been talking about, which is a group that has this website of the Midwest area, and it's kind of like a business brokerage, to try and find people and businesses and have them meet and come together, so I think they're going to be using that as well with this incubator, for this incubator.
I think it was described as being sort of the Craigslist of business availability, and putting that together with people that are seeking to invest in a business.
I'll make a motion to approve the city of Arlington being the fiscal agent for Choose Arlington for the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation Grant Application.
Second. Councilmember Haddelstead moved that the, moved to approve the city of Arlington being fiscal agent for Choose Arlington for Southern Minnesota Initiative Fund Grant Application. Any further discussion? None, no in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion's carried. Item fourteen, discussion regarding what it'd be necessary to close Henderson Road to semi-traffic.
Council, going back to the discussion that we had last week, and the concern from residents about truck traffic that we've also heard here this evening, Henderson Road, there, that road is currently designated as a truck route, there are areas of town where we specifically have some signs with a circle and a line through the truck indicating non-truck routes, but one of the complaints that we've heard from residents is, again, that trucks are not using that private drive off of Five on the southwest side to gain access that are coming in on Henderson Road, which also has sidewalk and leads out to the trail. So, I think that there was some receptiveness to possibly designating Henderson Road as a non-truck route and steering traffic otherwise. Attorney Arneson, did you have...
Yes. This question hasn't come up in quite a while, we had a discussion in the past that when the canning factory was operating, at a certain point, we had an understanding that silage trucks would be kept off Henderson Road, and there may have been some official action, or it may have just been an understanding with the canning factory, but in any case, that was, again, the origin of that gravel road, you know, running through the canning factory grounds, and the city participated in the cost of creating that with the canning factory, with the understanding that improved their access for trucks off Highway Five. And that's what the city offered in exchange for the canning factory, you know, taking the silage trucks off Henderson Road. And I did find one leftover sign right at the corner of the Ballfield Diamond, on, it would be Adams and, I think, First Avenue, it's up on the pole there, right behind the, you know, the backstop, along with some other signs, but I couldn't find any other signs anywhere in the Henderson Road vicinity, so, but the city administrator did come up with a map that showed that it, you know, was designated as a truck route at one time. Researching what it takes to change it, I discovered that the approach is actually the opposite of what I thought, and that is, you don't take a certain street and say, "No trucks on this street," it's the opposite. Under our code section seven point four, which is based on a state statute, we designate what are truck routes. Anything that's not a designated truck route is a no-truck street, and when you think about it, that is the more logical approach, because most of our city streets should be non-truck routes. You don't want semis, you know, cruising up and down all our residential streets. We don't usually see that, because they don't have any reason to, but, you know, can we regulate that? Yes, we can. And the way that a lot of cities handle this is, we have some prominent signage on the portals to town, in other words, the roads leading into town, so Highway Five at both ends, Highway Seventeen, you know, County Nine, that's where we put the signs, basically saying, you know, trucks over ten thousand pounds, designated truck routes only. And then, all we have to do is occasionally post the actual truck routes. And so, if, for example, we adopt that as our plan, we don't have to post anything on Henderson Road, you know, we just have to be careful that we post the actual truck routes, which would be Highway Five and any other streets that we want trucks on. That's a lot less signage, so.
I understand why, once upon a time, they had that there because of the canning factory, but since the canning factory is gone, and Northland Drying has the option to enter at another point, and Josh sat here, if I remember correctly, and said he would do that, there's no reason to have semis on Henderson Road with their bike paths and everything else, there's just no reason.
I know he hinted that that road maybe need, you know, was not in good shape, well, ungrade it, you know, it's their road, it's their private road.
That's exactly right.
Send the grader in there and take care of it.
Take care, but he's not going to take care of it if we allow him to use Henderson Road.
Yeah.
As one of them said, there are thirteen semis down there today.
Oh, I should mention, by the way, that both our city code and state statute allow us to make occasional logical exceptions, and that is occasional access by trucks for necessary purposes, trucks or other overweight vehicles, and that's garbage trucks, school buses, emergency vehicles, you know, fire department vehicles, things of that nature. Now, if the council wanted to proceed, the recommended approach would be this, that the council will determine what streets or highways in city limits are designated truck routes. And then, we would put that in an ordinance form, and then, again, the approach is that we're saying, anything that's not so designated as a truck route is automatically a non-truck route. So, that basically covers all the other areas of town, including, but not limited to Henderson Road.
Is that something that the Streets Committee wants to work on and bring back to the council, or is that something that we want to do here, or...
I don't know why we couldn't do it here.
Pardon?
I said, I don't know why we couldn't do it right here.
We couldn't do it right now, if there's no, if the council is in agreement on what they want to do.
If everybody agrees that that's the move we should make, then it's just a matter of, as Attorney Arneson said, designating our truck routes for the community.
Is there anyone who wished to send it to committee, or should we take care of it right here?
Let's get it done.
Yeah, I agree. Yep, I agree. Cut her off.
Okay, who would, who would then work on the uh designating those truck routes? Who would the council authorize to sit down and?
Would it, Ross, would it be as simple as simply removing Henderson Road from?
From the map here, from the colored map?
Of truck routes, uh, an individual coming in on Freedom Drive would still have access to Fourth Avenue as a truck route.
Right, if, I mean, if somebody coming in on Freedom Drive isn't going to the plant, there should be no reason they're going to Henderson.
They would either go up this way or down to the south.
And even if they are going to the plant, I mean, they still can go.
I mean, we have decked designated truck routes now.
We do, we just have to make sure that they're well signed though.
Right, and we gotta get rid of Henderson Road off of that.
So if this, if this right here would be just eliminated from being colored, unless there's some other changes at the same time we wanna make.
Um, did we once talk about doing it, the truck route past the east side of the school or not?
That second, that second and third avenue?
We did talk about that once last time, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
We wanted to eliminate that, right? Or it's not a truck route.
It's not a truck route, no, but I think a lot of people take it.
That'd be Alden, you mean?
No, that would be Second Avenue. I mean, we, I, I'm just trying to.
What's the tonnage on that road? That was, that was the one that was just paved.
Yeah, we just did that.
Did we do nine ton? Cause if it's not nine ton, I don't know.
Alden is lighter too because that's the one we just read up. So that's why I'm wondering if, if we take Alden off and use second.
Well, it, it sounded like a lot of the delivery trucks coming to the school and to the grocery store and so forth are coming in off Highway five on Third Avenue.
Third Avenue?
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue.
Second Avenue, right here.
That's second?
Yes.
Yeah. Past the bowling alley.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Maybe, maybe Alden should be taken off and Second Avenue should be added as a truck route.
Or we just leave Second off.
Or just leave both? Leave both?
Uh, Jason said it didn't, there wouldn't be enough traffic that it would do anything major uh harm to that road.
Alden?
Alden, yes.
Cause I suppose you have deliveries to school plus deliveries to the grocery store, that would be the only two now, being Semestone is out of there. That would be the main users of the, you know, hopefuls.
There's a lot less residential, but it is a school, so I don't know. But we did reduce that speed limit on that road, it's twenty miles an hour. So.
Would the council be in favor then of voting on adding that Second Avenue?
And taking?
Leaving Henderson Road off? And those would be our changes?
What about Alden going down to? I can't read it on the map.
It, it, Alden, it goes from Highway five all the way down to where Semestone was, so the block after the grocery store.
Do we need it?
Well, if somebody's coming from the grocery store from that way, they'd, but.
Not Alden, I'm sorry, Adams.
Oh.
Oh, Adams, south of, south of Main Street.
They have it going past the railroad tracks to first.
Going past the Alden.
That's going past Four Seasons Park.
Yeah, right here.
And then up to Main.
And up to Main.
There, really, there's commercial businesses back in there, I don't know. They have the auto body, um, Chef Craig's, the bank.
Holden's.
Holden's.
Do any of those require semi-traffic?
That's what I'm wondering, I don't know if they do or not.
We haven't had any complaints from people on Adams about semi-trucks, so.
No.
But I mean, as we're redoing it, you might as well, common sense and redo it.
Fix it if it needs fixing.
Yeah.
Does it need fixing?
It's a mayor.
And there's truck route around Adams and down by Sixth and Seventh, and I'm wondering if that's.
I just wanted to make a mention, um, when we have seen some of that truck traffic because of the U-turn, they do need the way to make a turn and come back out from the downtown area, um, and I don't know if that's a consideration where maybe they need to go all the way down to seventeen and, and exit.
Oh, I see, like, if they're on Main, they can come this way or place versa, okay.
Yes. I've seen the, the trucks that are on Main Street make that turn and, and return back to five.
Okay.
Just to throw that in.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, would we need both though? I mean, they could still do the U-turn on Alden or, you know?
Where?
I don't know.
Alden or Adams.
Yeah, Ald, right here. So they could either make a U-turn here or make a U-turn down there. Do we need both for certain?
How, how do they fit with that median by the railroad tracks there? Can they even turn there? With the two medians?
I can't say, I can't say I've seen any right there. Usually it's at second and they'll turn either north or south and then they'll make a turn back to the west.
Sure.
Either on Alden or on Adams.
And second, second is not a truck route here though.
And that usually gets trucks for the Arlington house. I could see taking off um Adam Street and that little piece of Third Avenue. I don't know how trucks could turn in there anyhow, cause there's two medians and the railroad tracks right there and the arms. So if they're gonna make a U-turn.
They would do it here.
They would do it there by the grocery store. Or vice, you were coming from the grocery store and going back. And then is that Third Avenue Southwest? Does that go around uh the park? Right? No, that's by the bank, right?
The second backside of the center.
They're right there, right there.
That's the plant.
Oh, there's railroad tracks. Oh, I see. That is the plant or is that? No, that's that residential, but that is the plant, yeah, that is the plant.
Yeah.
No, is it? Little Baker?
There's some houses here, yeah, there are houses, sorry. Dwight Grivitski's is right here.
Well, the plant is on both sides of railroad tracks.
Right, yeah, yep. So Henderson ends right here, basically.
So, on the, what direction am I going here, east-west? On the southeast corner of the railroad tracks where the plant is, do trucks need to get into that area?
In here?
Can they come down?
They would come in that
That road.
That private road.
That road comes all the way down and they have access, well, I mean, they would, I think there's access before Henderson Road to turn into where they're, where the loading dock I, I would say is on their building.
Yes, yeah.
Right through here. By Arneak's house?
No, we're.
By the trailer court.
We're down by the.
But wouldn't, shouldn't they be able to get in, is this a, a main office there? Or isn't it anymore?
I don't know if it is anymore, I don't, I don't know.
Once you pull in there, you can get all the way around their buildings.
Well, the main thing is.
I think we should personally just eliminate Henderson Road for now. If we wanna add Second Avenue, that makes sense, but the other one, we're making a lot of assumptions that we don't know.
Correct.
Which, which kinda makes me nervous to, to, to eliminate some of those other things where somebody might be using it for legitimate purposes. And if we haven't had complaints, you know, maybe we can at least research that part. But I think for me, the Henderson Road is, let's get that.
That's the key.
Off now and, and I could see add, adding second.
Then we can send it to the committee and sit down maybe with the chief of police and work the rest out.
Right.
Yeah, that's a big safety concern right now.
Yeah.
I don't, you know, it hasn't been reviewed since the, since the trail was put in.
Right.
You know, as far as how much of a, uh, how much of a hazard that is with biking and walking on, on part of it and parking on the other and.
Is there truck signs down there allowing, is that Henderson Road marked as truck traffic at this time?
There's two signs.
There's two signs.
There are.
There's one on the telephone pole when you come off the plant just before uh Rich Miller's house.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's one where you come in up on five that says to come down Fourth Avenue, I believe it is.
I did see a truck, truck route's all on Henderson.
So we gotta zip the signs down.
We have, right now, there's two truck signs, there's seven bike road signs, three kids at play signs, and it's a buck of truck route, so it just doesn't make any sense.
Yeah. Is there signage, signage down by seventeen also?
Yes.
Okay.
And one, one beat up sign on the telephone pole there, there's one on the other end, and then Lisa just left, she showed me where it divides to tell you to come down fourth and come down. It says you can go down Freedom too, that's where Michelle lives, I don't know why you take a truck back there, but it says you can go left or right on Freedom Henderson.
There's a lot of egg and stuff that way, I mean, it's going out of town, so. And, and the trail's not on the road.
No, you have the sidewalk there, the trail, the trail ends at the, at the corner, they moved to the sidewalk and the grass, so.
If we want to uh strictly enforce our truck routes, we need to improve the signage. Cause right now, if the police try and ticket somebody and they fight it, I, I think the ticket would be thrown out by the judge. Um, you know, because they, they could say, well, there is no sign when I entered town saying you had any truck routes. So I wasn't looking for any specific truck route signs. And in fact, I think in a lot of our truck routes, there is no truck route sign, you know, so how do they know where they're legal? So I think that's part of it that, you know, we would wanna survey the town and determine exactly where we need signage. And once we have a proper signage, then we can enforce the rules.
Okay, well, uh.
I would like to see us, Mr. Mayor, uh, put this on the agenda for next week, maybe uh have Chief Pedersen look at these routes and maybe we can study them a little bit more before we make a decision that we have to undo later on. Cause I'm not sure, in my mind, around the canning factory and Northland Drying and um Siwix portion, what they need to get in and out of there, I don't wanna box somebody in or keep them from getting to their businesses legally.
Okay, would you ta, motion to table or make a?
I'll make a motion to table this to the next council.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Councilmember Highland, second by Councilmember Hattelstedt to table the Henderson Road uh truck route topic until the next council meeting, which would be first meeting in June.
Yep.
Okay, any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Oppose no?
I'd like to get it done tonight, but I'd just soon get it done right and.
Yeah. Okay.
If we got it done tonight, as Attorney Arnison said, until we get the signage up, nothing's happening anyways.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. All right, item fifteen, discussion regarding industrial park.
Michelle, do you wanna introduce that one?
Sure. So I would just like to have some discussion um, uh, with the council regarding the industrial park or a industrial park. Um, how do we feel about it? Do we have money for it? Is it something that we should be putting out to our committees to be working on? Should, I, I have a ton of questions regarding it and I just wanted discussion regarding it and people's opinions.
The question I would have, and maybe it's one of your questions, Michelle, is we have the planning and zoning committee looking at different parcels of land that could possibly be a parcel for an industrial park. And I'm wondering if, and they can go through all that and take care of that. But if we don't have the money or we don't have the plan to follow through with it, then why do we have the planning and zoning even looking into it? Because they weren't real happy with us with the rental code program. And after they spend all their time, because it's gonna take some time and some hours to work that out and say, here's the property. And we're gonna say, well, we can't afford it right now, why did we spend the money?
Why did we waste their time?
Why, yeah, could, we ended up wasting their time and we spent a bunch of money on meetings that we don't have any money. So that's my big question of the whole thing, if we don't have the funds or we don't know where we're getting them or what the cost is to the taxpayers, why are we, why are we researching doing this?
I think it'd be great to have an industrial park, but it's, it sounds like it's gonna take a couple million dollars to put something together.
I agree.
And then if we do have an industrial park and we have all the utilities in and somebody comes and wants to build something on that property, we'll give it to them. And then we give it to them on tax circum, financing, maybe ten to twenty years, so now the city will reap some rewards. But in the meantime, everybody, residents included, are gonna be funding that industrial park.
But that's, that's the nature of the beast of that thing.
I know.
If you don't have an industrial park and if you don't have TIF financing or the other, nobody's coming to your town. I'm not saying I like it, but it's the game. And either you play the game and you get some businesses, maybe. Or you don't play the game and you're gonna get nothing for sure.
Yeah.
And I don't have a problem with looking into and, and developing an industrial park. My fear is we're gonna spend all this money going through this and it's gonna come back to the council and the council's gonna say, how are we gonna pay for that? Then why did, we're, we're, we got the cart before the horse here, the horse, yeah, the cart before the horse. We're checking all this out and we don't even know if we can do this and I, I just not cool spending the money on that. It's weird throwing money out the window.
Right, I agree, I guess if we're gonna do it, we should do the financing first aside, say, whatever, two million dollars, this is how we would pay for it.
Yep.
Now find us a place to.
Right, I would think that would be the proper way and I don't know that we're doing it that way.
I'll, I'll, I'll just let the council know that there's been some just very preliminary discussions about uh, um, an organization that might be willing to partner with us to acquire some land that they could promote and market to businesses. Um, that, in which case, they would be willing to put up that, that funding to purchase. So it's all very preliminary at this point, but, you know, it's a, you know, there'll be a meeting coming up in, what is it, June?
Early June?
Early June to.
And, and that's all cool, but in the meantime, we have the
Right.
Planning and zoning sitting there hour after hour going through this.
Yeah.
And I fear that in the end, we're gonna say, thanks for picking out the piece, but we're not gonna do nothing.
Or that's not the one that they envisioned or?
Yeah, that.
And then, and then what, I mean, I.
I'm, I'm just afraid we're not going about this right.
You wanted to bring this up, what are your thoughts, Michelle?
Well, I have a lot of concerns, I don't know about money, I guess that's the biggest one, right, the budget? If it's a true priority, you know, it kinda floats into, um, what are, what are we trying to be the best at? Are we trying to be the best industrial um, community or, or what are we trying to be, I guess? A vision, right? I kinda feel lost, like we don't really have a true vision on where we're going, we're trying to do industrial park because we know that's what we should do. I kind of feel lost, like we don't really have a true vision on where we're going. We're trying to do industrial park because we know that's what we should do to get businesses in here. We're trying to do some housing and and trying to get them in because we need, we know we need more people. You know, we're trying to have our downtown thrive. So I mean, I feel like we're doing a lot of little things and it's not bad little things. But I kind of feel like we need to do one thing and do it well. Or at least focus on one thing and maybe, that's my thought.
I think until two twelve gets forelaying out to Glencoe. And Highway five is improved from Green Isle to two twelve.
Yeah, that's rough.
We are, we are not gonna be a Chaska or Carver or Cologne.
No.
Or a Norwood.
Or even a Norwood.
No.
We're a little ways away from that and I, that Benjamin, is it Winchester? God, we gotta get him out here. Honest to God. You know, he figured we were, remember that? Wasn't that great?
It was awesome.
We, Arlington, Gaylord, Green Isle, we're centrally located between Hutchinson, New Ulm, Mankato, Eden Prairie. We're right in the middle. We're thirty-five, thirty-eight miles from any of those major areas. And right now, people are willing to drive a half hour, forty-five minutes for their job. So somehow we just have to tell people, hey, we're here, you know? We're building a couple, three houses in town. I mean, and I think that's.
Norwood is getting filled up with houses.
Pardon?
Norwood is getting filled up with houses. They, they just, according to my neighbor, they just filled up a sixty lot. Piece parcel of land and they're going to start another one because they need the room.
Yeah. No, it's, there is a housing shortage.
And they're next door.
They're a lot closer.
On fifteen.
No, Norwood is next door to us.
Closer than metro.
Yeah.
But they're on two twelve. That makes sense.
They got two major highways there.
One thing, I mean, if we, if we decide not to do the industrial park, then we have to give some direction to the EDA as far as what we want them to do.
That's what we need.
What we want them to focus on. Because if we're not gonna focus on this, obviously, we're not focusing on bringing in, bringing in big businesses, so we have to. Decide what we want them to do.
We're never gonna have a three M here.
Well, well.
You know, you know what I mean?
But if we don't have land for them to sell, we gotta have something else for them to to work on.
Well, and I mean, a huge thing that's been going on is try, is uh uh filling up the businesses uh with the aging, what is it, what's that called?
Succession.
Succession planning. Thank you very much. That's been a huge thing and we know that that's big and coming on the next few years that that's gonna be big. So succession planning, getting the thing, getting people in here, commercial, things that are gonna take care of the people who live here and make it a great place to live. You know, make it a pla- great place to live. I mean, we've done a lot moving towards that way in the last few years, I think, guys. I mean, we've. Built up the police department and community policing. I mean, that's, that's gone really, really well. You know, we have ambulance service in town. We have a hospital in town. There's a lot of great things about town. It's just, we're, we're a bedroom community. You know, do we wanna embrace it, kind of like Victoria did? Or do we wanna try and be something and push for something that we're really not right now? I don't know. I guess. That's maybe big question.
Again, the tough part is, is that, as Amy said before, if you don't have any land, nobody's coming. They don't wanna hear about the lot you can buy a year from now or six. So they want shovel ready spots. And like I said, I don't have a problem with that, but if that's the direction we're gonna go, I think we have to find funding for an industrial park. Before we start having people looking into where we're gonna put it when we don't even know that we have any money to do it.
Yeah. We got the twenty-two acres south of town.
That's such a shame, because if we could get access to that, all problems are solved. I, I just wish we could work with Josh and and somehow upgrade that road so we could have access to it. But I don't see that in the future.
You know, and and I hate to say this, we had an opportunity when Seneca was still there and we passed on it.
Yeah.
To buy access to it.
Yep. And that was, I think, two point four million at that time. We had the funding, the funding was even. Didn't we have some funding in place already?
I think there was, there was some grant money for putting, for putting utilities and running the power sewer, utilities.
Utilities.
It was about fifty percent of the total cost. It was about a million bucks, I think. But that was for facilities or putting the services and not the purchase of the property.
Right.
But yeah, I guess the biggest thing is, is do we have the money for it, number one, and is it, is that gonna be our priority moving forward? Is that our number one priority?
We, we can answer that already. We don't have the money right now. We're just about, we're going into a two thousand nineteen. Street improvement project, which is going to tie our hands for, because it's significantly higher than what we've done in the past. We're probably gonna be, have our hands tied for probably the next four years as a result of that.
But we're still then tasking the planning and zoning to do this and they're having meetings and we're, the city's paying for that.
Because.
In the end, we know that this probably isn't gonna work out anyways.
But eventually, we're gonna get there. Eventually, we're gonna need to know where within the city of Arlington can we put industry where it's not going to interfere with residential. I mean, you can't, you can't just flip the switch and one day say, okay, the businesses are here, now we've got everything laid out, ready to go. We gotta make slow progress, but move in that direction. And that's where I think having the committee start to look at this. Because quite honestly, we're, you know, we thought we had identified a good spot.
Yeah, we spent a whole bunch of money over there.
Yeah.
And now we're somewhere maybe else spending more money. That's my point. We keep spending money and we're not getting any further ahead. And I don't want us to see us just keep spending, well, let's go over here, let's go, well, that was twenty thousand, well, that's ten thousand. Pretty soon, you got eighty thousand bucks spent.
Exploring different places.
I, that's my problem with this.
I mean, you know, if somebody's looking right now to come in or whatever, like you said, if the preliminary meetings come out and they come out good. We do have indust-, we do have twenty-two acres.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I mean, that's a given. Money's already been put into that project.
And.
Right? So I mean, if they're willing to pay with their funds, here's, I mean, we own this, this is what we have. And if they don't want that spot, then yeah, I mean, I guess then, then it would take some more work, but let's get a commitment out of somebody before we move ahead. And if they're willing to make a commitment like that, if it's out there a few years, I don't know. I just feel like it's.
Well.
Spinning wheels, giving somebody something to do that really, they, there's nothing to do. I don't know.
Find some more builders that wanna come to Arlington to build houses.
Well, I think we talked about it at the meeting with the EDA and with the planning and zoning, you know? If we don't have the businesses here right now, maybe it's talking with the property owners and getting first right of refu- refusal. Gain different things so that when businesses do come, we're a little better prepared than where we are right now, which is not having an idea and just saying, I don't know, where do we go, what do we do?
But we don't have the money.
We don't have the money, but we can always.
Have the money.
We can always have an agreement with a property owner to say that, you know, before you sell the land, we'd like you to consider the city. And maybe that's five years down the road, maybe that's ten years. But to have options, right now, we don't have it, we have very few options. We have the nickel property and we have the twenty-two acres.
To me, that's a completely different thing. I mean, if you go talk to the property owners and say we want first, I mean, I don't know if we have to spend a ton of money to do that. You know, we can talk to the property owners and s- and ask that and then, you know, when they're ready to sell.
Or get a first rate of refusal on the property, whatever.
That's right, yeah.
You know, I, I don't, I.
At least we have it locked in if, when they.
Yeah, I kind of feel the same, that we're, we're jumping ahead, be quite a, I mean, even if we're four years away from being able to afford it. I mean, if we wait two years, we still have plenty of time to plan. That's my opinion. And if something changes in the meantime, where we get somebody else that wants to come in, then let's. And it's a, makes sense, then let's jump into it.
Yeah.
You know, if, if Green Isle was filling up on their industrial park and people are knocking at the door to buy those lots.
They aren't.
I would say, let's get going on it.
They've sat, they got one deal and it's how long many years they've been sitting there waiting?
Fifteen. And in Bartles, is that thing still cooking?
Yes, that's still cooking.
You have the cab, carpenter cabinet shop?
Yeah, that's cool. That's something running. That's something running, so. Well, is a consensus of the council to sort of uh request planning and zoning to hold off on that? Rather than spending more time on it as far as looking into industrial park? I would certainly like to see them weigh in on the nickel property as far as potential rezoning, if they think it's a wise thing, if it's something that they would advise to do or not advise to do. Right now, it's on residential.
I think that.
Residential slash agriculture.
At the last meeting and one of the members is here. If I remember correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, weren't they looking at a different classification for that piece of property?
The Nichols property?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, so they're looking at classifying it in another classification that we do not have at this time.
And there would be nothing wrong with them pursuing that.
Well.
So that if that piece is available, if, if there is a buyer.
But there again, at eighty or ninety bucks an hour for Cynthia, and she spends twenty hours on it, that's eighteen hundred bucks. And we don't, that's, I don't have a problem with an industrial park if we know we've got the money to move ahead with this. So there, we spend eighteen hundred or fifteen.
But Tom, we own the nickel property already. We own the nickel property.
Yeah, but if they have to sit and sit down and go through and redesignate this, Cynthia's gonna have to do a lot of research. And the city will get built for every bit of that. And then it comes back and we say, sorry, we don't have any money. We just. I don't know. I just have a real serious problem spending money that way.
I just think if we, we know the property's there, you know, Amy and the planning commission and EDA know the property is there. If we get somebody that needs the property, the rezoning can probably be done in a very short period.
We can move fast on that.
But I would imagine, though, it's a matter of marketing that property, right? So Amy would need to know what it's zoned, so that kind of relates to how she markets it. Or doesn't market it, right? It's either residential and it's marketed as, as residential lots for sale, or it's marketed as multi, who knows what? New zone that they come up with. So I mean, I, I'm in favor of them looking at what kind of zone we can zone it as. To have more flexibility, maybe more option if somebody is coming in and looking. And it is spending some money, but it's not putting, dropping a whole bunch of money in it.
Shouldn't take a lot of time to rezone there.
It shouldn't, no.
Well.
It's a new zoning.
Keep in mind, we tried to push things along a little too fast, six months ago, eight months ago, and that didn't work either, so. There, there's, I don't want to get caught in that again. So it takes whatever it takes, put it that way.
I, I would be fine, I guess, with the planning and zoning, trying to figure out what designation they want to zone that nickel property at.
Well, yeah.
But I'd rather stop moving forward on looking at which property we're gonna build on when we have no plans of building.
Right, or infrastructure.
No, I, I hear you.
Right, industrial.
Now, you said someone comes along and they wanna do something, we can get the ball rolling as fast as we possibly can. I'm not saying, say no. I just.
And I mean, maybe after your June meeting, whatever that is, that you'll have some more information and, and maybe have a better gauge on it. Like I said, I mean, I just feel. Moving ahead with.
Yeah, and we can certainly share that with the council when it's appropriate to make it public, but.
I can interject a comment. Uh, you mentioned succession planning and if you're looking for something for EDA to do, I think that would be a very significant project. It's been on, I think, our minds for some years now. Um, it was partly accidental, but I can recall when I came to town. Forty-five, forty-six years ago, there were a lot of other young professionals that came into town either at the same time or a year or two before or after me. And if you eliminate everybody on Main Street who's now of retirement age, half of Main Street's gonna be empty. So I think it's something that, you know, the city should see if it can, you know, help to solve.
Yeah, they have been working pretty hard on it, I think.
Amy has been meeting with um businesses and she's had a couple classes regarding that or whatever. So I mean, I think there's been strides, but I guess, you know, with your point, I mean, we need to really kind of hone in on what's our fo- what, what do we want our focus to be? I mean, is it industrial park or is it succession and lifestyle here and, and getting homes built or what is it? So I mean, I don't know if we can talk about it a little bit more at a workshop and stuff like that too, just to really get a fine definition. So that when planning and zoning or when EDA or when parks or when any of our committees come to us and ask us. You know, what's your priorities, we can tell them straight up right now. We're not, we, we, we don't have a wheel. We have one, two, three really big priorities that we're working toward and that we wanna do really, really well.
And keep in mind how that changes. I mean, when we met, met, what, a year ago and went through all these sessions with uh the gentleman over uh at the school. You know, we came up with priorities then, but you know, things have happened since then and that's, so.
Well, I think that's why they talk about doing that planning or that, um, those workshops every year. You know, because things do, do change.
Do change, yeah. Okay, anything more on industrial park discussion? I think we probably have exhausted most ideas and for now. Let's move on to item sixteen then, discussion about council direction and communications. Is that a different area that's?
Uh, yeah, kinda can go along the same lines. Um, and then I, I suppose I can add a little, add a little something. So um, so in the recent months or so, I've be, I've been becoming more and more concerned and frustrated with the lack of follow through in communications. Between the administration and council, questioning myself a lot on decisions that I make, um, that I need to make. Um, feeling like I don't have all the information that's available to me at the time that I'm trying to make my adjudicated decision. Going back a couple months or a few months, you know, talking about the street project and how the bid numbers were held back until the very end of the meeting. Instead of giving it to us when, when we were um talking about that. I don't know if anybody else feels the same way, um, or I do about any of these things. Um, other council directions that are not being followed through with, we just had a vote on a street project and I know three of you voted on it now again when it got back, but brought back up. But the direction at the time when we made the decision was to bid in the fall. And however it happened, there was negotiations that happened between that week and it got brought back and, and uh, some of you folks voted differently or whatever. I'm fine with that. I mean, the decision was made. I just don't feel like uh the council's direction was taken.
I understand what you're saying, Michelle.
So um, so, so, so there's, there's that one, right? That was the most recent one. Other things are brought up to be questioned over and over and over again, like we either do a consensus or we do a vote. And then all of a sudden, a week or two later or a month later, it's brought up again after we made a decision, maybe not the right decision. I don't know. I'm concerned about hearing things on the street. We're not hearing things at all. I've been asking over and over and over again for updates, updates, updates from Pat. And um, I don't know what's going on half the time. I mean, we touch base, so I mean, I kind of feel like I'm in the loop, but not real, I mean, not really, really. I know when Liza was here, we had weekly updates and um, that was huge. I mean, even if nothing was really going on, something's always still going on. And we were kept in the loop, so I really feel like we're, we're, like, I'm out of the loop. I can't speak for the rest of you. This is, this is me.
No, I like those updates also.
I as well, I look forward to.
I as well, I look forward to getting the updates.
And I'm 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 certainly to blame for not getting those out as frequently as I should. I mean, the workload is, I know even with Laura, you know, coming on, I've been given additional time with Laura. You know, Vicky was a halftime individual, but yet she knew what she was doing. Laura is learning and figuring it out and with Northland drying, with different things coming up. It does take considerable amount of time, but there's no excuse. A weekly update is something that, yeah.
I think where I get a little frustrated on that, as long as we're talking about it. Is I understand there was a time when you're pretty darn busy. If I look back, there was times Liza was very busy. Many times Liza's came out pretty, they weren't at four thirty in the afternoon.
Right.
But where I really got frustrated is is that now Laura's here and she's working, and I understand that she doesn't do everything. But she's working thirty-two to thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven hours a week. And I think, man, with that much time away from off of Pat's back, couldn't he have found an hour to send us an email? I'm being honest. I mean, before you had all that, she's taking a lot of workload off you, or it appears she has. I mean, I understand there's always gonna be Northland drying and there's always gonna be whatever situation it is, those never end. But with the amount of time that Laura's taking care of, and I think, is it, would it be that much to do an hour's update? Because I really liked those updates, really, really did. If nothing more, it kept me in the loop ninety percent of the time. And I'm just afraid we keep getting away further away from it and all of a sudden it's gonna be gone.
Well, it has already gone.
Well, and I will commit to you right now to to get the weekly updates. There's no reason why I can't take time to get that out.
It doesn't have to be a storybook.
No.
Yep, yep.
One or two lines about different subjects and.
Because there's stuff that goes on that sometimes we don't even know about, and your update that you worked on it. Well, maybe now we know about it. Cause yeah, like Michelle said, sometimes if I'm being honest, I feel a little out of the loop.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, but I do.
I can and will change that.
Okay.
So.
Points well expressed and points well taken.
Well, I think sometimes we have to do this if we're going to
Yep, I agree.
All our issues and address them, even if they're hard, they gotta be brought up.
That's that's true.
And I would rather hear it from you now versus later, so.
And then I just have one comment on the street project that it did put everybody in a tough position. You know, to bring it up again, I will say that.
Yeah, and it's not over.
No.
Far from over.
After a decision was made, and I and I think that's my frustration right there too.
Yeah, and and it should have went a little bit farther the initial night, which I think you brought up. Where it wasn't, but you know, should have been brought up, okay, that was turned down, you know, is there a motion to reject all bids, you know, that that next step should have been taken to close any loopholes there was. It's over, it's done, and that that's also seems to happen a lot, which kind of goes to your point where we bring things up over and over again. You know, where it's not finished. You know, the first time.
Okay, I will certainly work on doing a better job of addressing. Keeping you, all of you in the loop so that there are no surprises and prioritizing the communication is the top priority for me. Just to get that weekly email out to you. Short and sweet, and then if you have questions from there, you can always contact me and I'm more than happy to give you more information.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
No, thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, is there anything else you wanted to say on that topic?
No, no, not not on that topic, I mean, I I think um, just to go along with it or whatever as far as council direction and stuff like that. I touched on that before when we were talking about the industrial park. It kinda all kind of goes together there, so. Yeah, I, the communications was a huge thing. And and the budget is another huge thing that I'm really concerned about, so. I just wanted to bring that up or whatever too, I don't know what it looks like, haven't seen it, seen a little bit of it last month. Just don't know, I don't know, and that concerns me.
Just one more point on communications, I know we, Pat and I talked and and recently had a meeting and we felt it was extremely important for whatever is going on with the two I'd say major committees, but committees that are the busiest, and that would be EDA and planning and zoning. That they communicate once, at least once a month, the three with Pat, Cynthia and Amy. So that they all know what's going on with each other's contacts, things that are maybe in the works. So that they get to to understand what what's happening among the three groups. And you had assured me that would.
Yeah.
I would prefer to see it face to face rather than somebody somebody phoning in. I think that's not a great way to, you know, to really do a good job of communicating when someone's always just calling in. I think if it could be scheduled so that the three of you could meet face to face once a week or once a month, that would be the best, but that's my preference.
Well, to add to that, I think it would help repair relationships or build relationships that are not the best right now. And moving forward, we all need to think about what's best for Arlington, right, so.
Okay, moving on, council member committee updates, any committee meetings that were?
We had a street committee meeting.
Let's hear about it.
We met with Kirby, Tom was there. And a representative from one of the lighting warehouse distributors about our street lights. And uh, there's a lot of discussion about the different lights to use for the different locations, residential lighting versus highway lighting. And then we talked about how to proceed with the bidding and um, I think, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, Kirby's gonna try and get two bids, a couple of bids.
Two for, the way it's gonna go down, my understanding is, we will buy the lights and we will bid for labor.
Okay.
And this Corin, was his name Corin?
Yeah.
He said we'd end up with a better deal than trying to go through and the company that puts them up buy the fixtures from them. He said you will be better off to buy the fixtures and have a contract separately for the labor end of it.
Was there some talk about the kind of lights in that, I've heard some comments about some of the lights that are being put in in residential are just way too bright?
Yeah. Initially, the lights that they were getting had a module in them where they could adjust the brightness or to dim it down about three different positions. And was it Corin?
Corin.
Corin suggested that for residential, you use a little lower luminary light than you would on like Highway five or a main.
Right.
Main thoroughfare. And then they've got the acorn lights that we're gonna use on Main Street. Uh, those will probably be brighter than the ones you would use. There was a light that went out in my neighborhood and I had mentioned it to Kirby and he came and put one of the newer lights in there. And it's a nice light, but I wouldn't want it any brighter, you know, it's it's right there. So anyhow, we go out for bids on installation. I got an email from Kirby today.
Yeah.
Did you get the same one?
Yeah, I got the same one.
He was saying we get a contractor to put the lights up on Main Street.
Do the whole thing at one time, yeah.
And then he and Mike would do the rest rest of the lights in the city. And they can probably figure about half hour to an hour per light for installing, so it'd go pretty quick. And I said, I'm okay with that, but I don't want it to stretch out a year or two.
Same thing I said, but what he told me was is that he would set up a schedule every week that he would have so many hours set aside to put the lights up. The part that I liked was, this Corin said that the labor estimate's probably gonna be in that area of one hundred thousand dollars. And if, Main Street's about one-third of the lights. So if Kirby and Mike did the balance of those lights, let's say it took them three months. Probably gonna save sixty thousand dollars, that's some, this city doesn't get that many opportunities. Kirby had asked him or the discussion was, is there anything specific with the wiring? Corin said, no, there's two wires. And Kirby's put up, uh, I don't know, fifteen to twenty of these lights already. He's put them up, it's just putting the head up, wiring it up, and it's a done deal. But we can save a lot of money on this deal. I mean, let's say that Corin's estimate of a hundred thousand for labor is wrong and it's eighty thousand. So we take a third away from that, we're still spending, saving sixty some thousand dollars.
Do they have time to do that on top of everything else that they got going on?
That's what I went over with Kirby, I said.
Thing that would concern me.
I said, we had a long discussion today and I said, my concern is is that we're gonna have residents saying this didn't done, that that didn't get done. He said, I will, if it gets to the really important stuff, I will have it done, I can get this done. The city can save a lot of money, I can do the wiring. And I guess if, like I said, if it takes three months or four months, I mean, everybody's lights are working in town. If one burns out, Kirby and Mike can replace that one. So what's the difference if it takes? Really is no difference, the only thing is, we can save a lot of money, a lot of money.
Did he say, is there any lights out in town right now that haven't been fixed?
The way I gathered, no.
Okay.
But he had ordered a bunch.
They're worried, he had ordered a bunch, he's been putting up those units that we are going to go with for the, I think for the last
The new unit.
Seven or eight months.
Yeah.
Cause I think they'd bought, I thought Corin said twenty already maybe?
They bought twenty, kind of different lights to try to see what works the best. The different luminaries, the different.
And like Jim had said, he suggested to take that adjustment out of there. Because he said, once people find out you can adjust it, they're gonna have you back all the time.
Yeah.
Just get the lower one.
Lower one, lower light, you mean, lower lumens.
Lower lumen light.
Yeah, yeah.
And he said, you're still gonna have a brighter light than what you have now. You know, we don't need to blow them out of the
No, no, no.
Their bedroom because the lights are so bright, you know, you don't have the highway lights in town, so they're making all those adjustments.
Good, good, good.
And I did have a chance to touch base with Joe Green from MBEC and he's he says, tell me how much money and what you need, so.
Oh, good.
That's lined up.
So we're good there.
So we're good there.
So it's just a matter of whether we wanna save fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be a.
You say Kirby has, he's very confident he can do this.
So when do the bids go out for for the lights, I mean, is it gonna go out so that?
So basically I'm gonna get Kirby a one-page sheet of what it is and then he's gonna solicit bids for uh, the equipment as well as a portion of the installation and then we can go from there, so.
Cause I'm sure if we
Couple weeks we'll have.
Hire someone to wanna do the installation, if, I mean, it's optimum time is get it done during the summer.
He said normally they do it in the winter.
Really?
It's it's just slow time.
Well, yeah, unless you get a winter like this.
So if Kirby got the lights ordered, once we know we got it, he can start in July putting them up.
Sure, sure.
You know, and maybe the company that bid it, they might bid a summer price, they might bid a winter price, doesn't really matter.
For the labor.
For the labor end of it.
Corin said that a lot of the companies will put up the lights in the wintertime when they can't do other outside work, like digging or setting poles or whatever, and they can, you know, if it's not twenty below, you can still get up a.
Yep, yep. Okay, anything else on the streets committee?
I think that was pretty much it.
So yeah, I think the only thing that Kirby would need to know before he put the bid in for the labor is is the council willing to go along with putting the bid out just for Main Street, so that's done.
All at one time.
All at one time, and then Kirby and Mike doing this is, you know, he said, I'll set up a schedule. I don't have a problem with that, I think it's a great way to save some money, I know he can put these lights up. Like I said, if it, you know, we're all gonna have to be a little patient. Because maybe it will take him a month longer than he planned, what differences they make.
I mean, if it all falls apart and you have the lights and they say, well, geez, we just can't get at it, well, then you can always bring somebody in. You can still hire somebody.
But in the process.
Yeah, give them a chance, yeah.
I've been on the council here three years and I haven't seen an opportunity to save this kind of money in one shot.
Yep.
This, I mean, this serious money, we can save. And it's not, we're we're not forcing Kirby to do it, he offered to do it.
Sure. Okay, any other committee updates?
Let's just go back, we had consensus that we're okay with Kirby doing the installation.
Oh.
Yeah, I am.
Yeah. Yeah, it's in the minutes.
Sure.
That sounds like a good, good idea.
Um, we had our first AGI water meeting earlier this month. The first one I say is because I have not been, I've been on that committee from, I think, the time I've been on the council. And we have never had a a meeting. Um, so we had a meeting with the mayor of Green Isle, he came over, Joe, and we sat down and we looked at the contract and we decided we're gonna come back and talk soon after we figure, there was a um, a main that goes from Arlington to Green Isle that brings over all their stuff. And there's a meter on it, you like that?
Well, yeah, and you could have used the same word, but.
Well, what other word would you like me to use? I'll say their stuff. And um, and that meter hasn't been working for years.
Oh, really?
So um, so Lee is is working on fixing that meter, getting that meter to work. The way that um, we were billing or that they're billed is per their water usage. Um, not per their, so so and and we really, I mean, there was a lot of questions that came up regarding that more so than we had answers for, so. We wanted to get some good numbers together and see um, how much is coming through, get some data. And then meet again and then and then have another meeting with with Green Isle towards the end of the year.
Okay.
Maybe maybe talking more regarding, you know, do we charge for what they're sending us, not their water bill, maybe. I don't know, I mean.
Well, if you're looking at our water usage is half of what the sewer water is. You know, we we do two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water and we get back four hundred to five hundred thousand gallons of sewer water.
Right, so I mean, I guess my thought is it would only be fair to charge them on what they're sending us.
Sending us this way, because they could have a lot of eye and eye that is coming through.
Right, and nothing's holding them accountable for taking care of it, because we're treating it all.
Yeah, yeah.
So it was it was a good first meeting, um, Joe, I think, had no clue about it either. It was a real eye-opener meeting for all of us, so.
So has somebody else from the Green Isle Council come with or?
Nope, just Joe, just Joe, yeah. And I think next time though, I think he said that there's somebody's gotta be on that, he said.
Yeah.
So progress, good, little baby steps.
Good to hear. All right, any other committee reports?
We had a tree committee meetings.
We do, that's right.
So uh, uh, we met with Kirby, we've got, this is our last year on the tree grant that we've had for multiple years. So Kirby purchased some additional trees and has basically used up the funds from that grant. And so um, obviously with the street project going ahead, we're gonna be trying to figure out how many trees we'll be losing uh, there and then trying to plan accordingly for that, so. There will be a tree planting event, we just don't have it scheduled at this time, but I think it's gonna be working with Girl Scouts and with.
Maybe a four H club.
So that's not gonna happen with the school then?
They haven't replied to. They haven't replied to Kirby. Kirby put out feelers and they never have gotten back to him.
Well, would you talk to Kirby, cause nobody got back to him?
Yeah.
He had talked to Elsith, I think it was.
Yeah, Elsith and Butler. And they've been waiting now for him to get back to them.
Okay.
But we have like a week and a half left of school.
Yeah, and he said he's been waiting for them to get back to him, so it's a standoff.
Who's gonna blink first?
Who's gonna blink first? And we, we just sort of came to the conclusion that it's gonna be hard to schedule something with only a week and a half. We have only a week of school left really, yeah. Week and a half of school, so I'm not sure that's gonna happen.
Yeah, wrapping it up.
So maybe mention to, I don't know, mention to, I think he said he reached out twice and he never heard anything back, so.
EDA meetings, we haven't had one, so no, pardon me, not EDA, uh, cable commission.
Oh, cable commission, yes.
Got one coming up this Wednesday. Police committee meeting, we really haven't had any meetings, but we're gonna have one here pretty soon cause I think we have to do the sex offender thing and maybe a couple of other little issues, so.
Yep.
That's probably it for me.
Good.
And library and cemetery both met. Library was mostly, I'm just getting ready for the project, that was a few weeks ago already. And, uh, summer reading program, getting ready for that, they sold a bunch of books at the book sale. Um, and then the cemetery was kind of the same stuff, a monument policy that they wanna work on. And, um, getting the computer records, getting that on the CIP.
Yeah.
Within, relatively soon.
Well, you were talking about the software
Yes.
For, uh, plating out for the plats and the grave sites and that type of thing.
Yeah.
Which we, we had looked into.
I have one other thing that I like to bring up and, and maybe direction it, towards, towards, uh, towards you. Um, do you know or do we have a de- um, definition of what the council's job is on their committees as liaison? Are they representation of the council? What do they, are they spokesperson for that group that they're, uh, on, or for that committee or that commission that they're on? Um, is it specific to, um, each community developing their own idea of what that liaison is supposed to do? Or is there a defined?
There's, I don't think there's any written explanation, but I think the longstanding understanding, both in Arlington and most other communities, is that it's all of the above. Okay, uh, you're, you're a council representative to the committee, you're a committee representative to the council. And when you're in a committee meeting, you're a committee member. So I suppose you could say you're wearing three hats at once. That's the best answer I could give. And it, it should blend together, I guess, in ideal world. It's not like each of those roles is adversarial to the others. Uh, again, you know, they should all blend together and, you know, you're kinda doing all this three things at once. It's probably not very helpful, but that's my answer.
Okay.
Do you feel it should be written?
I, I was just curious if there was. I mean, I guess, I guess, I mean, you explained it fair. I mean, when you're at the meetings, we are members, voting members of those groups. And when we're here, you know, we're council members, right? So, and part of this group. And sometimes, I mean, you know, uh, I voted differently from what the committees have voted because of where I'm at here. And on the committee voted a different way or whatever too. So, I mean, I guess I, I just wanted some clarification on, you know, on that a little bit, I mean, if, is it? So, I guess that was my question.
I'm glad hospital and, uh, parks. The hospital, um, reviewed their, um, audit report and it was spotless. In fact, they were, uh, it was so well done, the auditors got to work on other things and maybe suggested vice, investments and whatever. Darla Anderson is responsible for, for that area and, uh, that was, she received recognition that night. Um, they moved the July meeting to June. The hospital is on the final leg and being ready. But of course, like the rest of the project, they tore a wall, tore, yeah, opened up a wa- a wall to the basement and it turned out to be a rotting a wall that supports the whole hospital above it.
Whoops.
Whoa.
Yeah, it was a supporting wall and, um, so that added a million dollars onto the project.
So they didn't know it until they started taking it out and things?
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I don't know if anything fell, but it's, it was a major supporting wall.
Okay.
And, um, it caused big problems, so they had to fix it.
Wow.
And they just have to find money. But, um, they're just about done. They're fin- you know, finishing up.
The summer sometime probably, completion, okay.
Um, so, Parks Board, we toured all the parks, just, uh, see how they're, how they fared the winter and then how much damage was done. There was, uh, out at Sportsman, one of the lenses was broken. Uh, that covers the light and
Okay.
So Kirby was gonna take care of that. There's still a couple in there that are bound in terms to get more picnic tables. We were, if we let this go, we'll never get it back. So, um...
I, did they understand that, I think there's only five thousand dollars in their budget?
Yeah.
And how their, that's where the picnic tables would have to come from?
They were gonna spend, they were gonna get their picnic tables.
With that five thousand?
That's what, two?
I don't, no, that was four.
Oh, four.
And, so I, 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 maybe Kirby will be able to talk sense into them, but, um...
Always comes down to money.
And
And picnic tables.
And then they're trying to figure out where the water line to the backstop, there was
Oh, yeah.
There used to be a fountain there, yeah, yeah.
And somehow it's disappeared. Figuring it's in the ground somewhere, but don't know how to find it.
They'll have to get people service.
Locator.
Locator.
Take a locator, not should be able to locate that.
You've got special powers, get those two wires and
Oh, yeah.
Ross does it?
Witching sticks or what are they called?
Yeah, right.
I don't know.
They cross over some when they find water.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen that done before.
But, uh...
Dividing rock, that was it.
Dividing, that's it, yeah.
They're gonna need the regular amount, I think, two loads of red rock for the infield and, and mulch for all, and Kirby said, with some of that extra money that they got, putting in some, uh, nu- new playground equipment. And it, it's due, you know, just rockers or...
You're talking about at Sportsman's Park or?
What do you mean, money they got?
There's five thousand dollars.
Oh. That's gonna go a long ways between picnic tables, playground equipment.
Sounds like they got spent about three conversations to go.
Water, water for the
Water by the backstop, yeah.
So that was pretty much it.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Highland, second by Bachelor to adjourn the meeting at nine ten P M.
A little earlier than last week, huh?
We're getting there. When the topics get less, we'll get done earlier.
I think some of your concern, sometimes you may feel like divided loyalties in a, uh, committee meeting and impressing you for what was a council.